I would like to start in time. Good evening, everyone. This evening is another budget meeting. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Finley is going to be here, but it's gonna be late, so I'm going to attempt to run the meeting. First of all, Paul, let's start with you. Do you want to help start this process?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As always, I looked through the budget with another set of eyes since we're at roughly six weeks since we first started preparing for the budget. So in looking at, yeah, looking at the budget, I found some items that I think the Town Council can consider to look into further. The first item is, I would like to talk about is the Civic HR, Civic HR Civic Plus Software Support for $18,500. We actually just signed a contract to do it in this year, so we can remove that from the budget. I talked to Jonathan IT about Office 365, the switch and open email, and he says that our Microsoft server, he believes, has about a year, year and a half. He feels comfortable pushing it out one year. As you know, there was two items there. There was the multi-factor authentication, which we left in the budget. He felt that was much more, neat, much more. It was needed more than the 365. So we left that $18,000 in the budget, but we were able to remove the 365. And then, online permitting, looking at, talking to the Fire Chief today, we believe there's sufficient money that we can move ahead this year with getting that software program installed and up and running. Really felt that's more of a really important need right now, so we can look into removing that. The last thing is, I want to bring a complete budget forward to the council. So I'm proposing a non-union wage increase of about $157,000, because I wanted you guys to have a full picture going forward and moving this stuff to the public hearing. With these changes and increasing the non-union wages, it's an additional one cent on the tax rate, so it'd be a total of 22 cents.
How much does, how much of an increase does that represent for the non-union wages?
About a three and a half percent raise.
You want to talk about where you came up with that number? Tell that number or?
I can elaborate more.
Thank you.
Right now, we have several union contracts that we try to, that as you know tomorrow, that we settled with a 3% cost of living increase. And then there was also additional things that were given to each one of those contracts. These are about 69 people who work for the town. They do not get any additional incentives. They don't get longevity. They don't get education, things of that sort, that is rolled into most of the other contracts. Looking at where we stand compared to other communities that sent out their, their, the managers, the manager's listserv gets a lot of these, what are you giving out for raises? What are you giving out for raises? And really, the 3.5% is what was on average of everything across the board of the state with them. You've got to remember, these non-union employees do not have steps. So all they get is a cost of living increase, where other communities will do a cost of living increase, a step, and maybe even merit. So across the board, it's, it's, what I was looking at is to keep the individuals that we do have in the town that we spent money to train, giving them a little bit more of a three and a half percent raise. That's a little bit of my thinking. I could go in even more if you wanted to, but that's really my, what I was thinking of when I was thinking about it.
Andy, did you have something?
Not on this, if Tom's done with.
No, I, that, that's a great explanation for me. I appreciate it. Just wanted to get it out.
I, I wanted to go back to the 85 for the online permitting. Yes. We said, so this sheet that you gave us has a reduction of $55,000, but the budget had 57.5.
Yeah, the extra $2,500 was for computers and printers in the department itself if they needed to be replaced.
So the proposal is, proposal is to keep the 2,500, remove the 55.
Right. And the 55 was for that software in general.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Tom, go ahead.
So, do you have a question?
So you said that the Civic Plus Software Support you would purchase this year. Do we need to have money in the budget for next year's agreement? Next year's support?
No, because we get a year free on it.
Okay.
So that'll take us, we're, we're going to implement this in the, we're implementing this in quarter three and the quarter three, which would be the March timeframe. So we'd get a year of support wrapped into this when we do it. The reason why we're waiting to the March timeframe is because a lot of our summer jobs will be filled with the current, so we're not trying to run two systems concurrently. So that's why we're looking at, you know, quarter three and the quarter three, or our quarter three, I should say. So, but yeah, no, it gives us a year. We worked in the, in the contract that we're doing now gives us a year of software support.
Okay, thank you.
All set?
All right. I was trying to look through my info here to see if I have it, but what was the tax rate that we agreed on last year?
The tax rate that was set last year was $3.86.
Eighty-six cents?
Eighty-six, three eight-six.
Okay.
And with the 22 cents, I'm proposing a tax rate of $4.08 at this time.
And that's prior to, and this includes the changes you already talked about.
Correct.
And it's, does not include anything, of course, that might come up for discussion tonight?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it does not include the three negotiated contracts we'll be talking about tomorrow.
It does not. But those come under the warrant articles.
Those come up on individual warrant articles, yes.
And that tax rate implication will be reflected in the warrant article.
They're not reflected in the warrant article, but they will definitely be reflected in our books that will go out. We send out that, our mailing. They'll be all reflected and explained in the mailing.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Not, not on these numbers.
Any other things, discussions that you want?
At this time, I don't have anything else. If the council has any additional questions, I felt to say at the beginning is that I do have department heads here. If there's a question that I cannot answer, they'll be more than happy to answer.
Hey, just to let you know, for those people who have not been through this before, what we will do now, after Paul has, or any questions that anyone might have, we will proceed through literally one at a time. And that's when you will bring up individual specifics?
If, if you need them, yes.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the, the $4.08 that you're currently proposing, that does or does not take into account the sheet that you gave us?
It does take into account everything that I've done.
All right, thank you.
All set? Does anyone, does everyone agree we can proceed with that process? Okay, good. Okay. Number one, general government. Is there anything you want to say anything about, Paul?
Nope, we, the, just the cuts that I have proposed in general government, which was the Civic HR and the Office 365.
Does anyone, any councilors have any questions or comments or suggestions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Number two, assessing. Paul, anything?
Assessing budget is pretty much the same as it was the year before.
Okay. Andy?
Just for my clarification, are, are we, are we just reviewing right now or are we proposing changes?
You can propose changes now, right?
Do we need to propose the changes that Paul gave us and make a motion and approve that or?
You, yes, that, you could do that, yes. At this time, you, that would be.
So the ones that you already presented, we, we should do a motion on?
Yes, you can, you can, you can accept the changes as, as presented in, in all, or you can do it when the department comes up. Either way, we've done it several different ways in the past.
Might as well just get over with now.
As far as these few changes?
The few changes, right. There's just the general, the non-union wages increase, changes in the software in the Office 365, as well as the online permitting. So we're talking about the positives and the negatives, right? Does anyone wish to make a motion about them?
I move to accept the changes as proposed by the Town Manager.
Motion proposed by Tom Kene, second by Lon Woods. Any discussion about that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're five. Five-four, none negative.
You're a five, five-zero-zero.
Did I say four, I meant five. Five-zero-zero. And let it be noted that Nancy Murphy just arrived.
At 6:43.
6:43. Okay, thank you, so that's done, that's.
Do you want to briefly, just for Nancy's benefit, just tell her what we just did?
Too late.
I'll just give you a real recap if that's okay. Because we started the budget, when we start the budget process, it's about six weeks now since I was able to, when I first presented the budget. I go through and look at it and see if there's any additional addition, subtractions that we need. And in order to give the council a full budget going forward to the public hearing, which is going to be held on February 16th, I proposed a non-union wage increase of three and a half percent for $156,000, the general fund. Then I proposed reductions in human resource, Civic Plus Software Support. We signed a contract in this year with some of the savings that we had, and it includes, so we can move that forward. Talked to Jonathan on our Office 365. He thinks our exchange server is good for another 18 months, year to 18 months. So we were able to delay that. And then talking to the Fire Chief on the online permitting, I felt that that was more of a need right now than to wait till, you know, six months from now to start looking at it. So we have the money in savings and salary savings and other things, so we're going ahead and purchasing that in this current fiscal year. So those are the changes that I'm proposing. And then, of course, wastewater and media also have non-union wage is, that are included in that.
All set, Nancy?
All set.
And what we've done already is we've gone through number one, which is general government, and no one had any suggestions. We are presently in the assessment. Number two. And is there any discussion or questions or recommendations from any councilors? Seeing none, let's move on to number three, which is fire. Paul, anything on fire?
The big thing in fire is, is that the chief gave us additional money for training. Brilliant, that's really where that budget increase was really, he came in as close to flatline there and did some training.
Can anyone just a moment to mull through?
Just a quick question on the fuel numbers that are in there. Is that, there, there's a big jump from 40 to 62. Is that just because of gas prices or diesel prices?
Gas and diesel right now.
Based on our contracts or expectations or?
You know, yeah, basically, just our expectations of where we're going to be next year. We've, we're pretty constant the last couple of years, being in the low, the low twos, the high ones for, for our gas and diesel, but diesel now is almost $4 a gallon that, that we got on our contract. And even our gasoline, we contracted, we got 282. So, you know, we're looking at trying to get some of that stabilization back in the budget, and it's really, who knows? If Ukraine war lasts longer, prices might go up again. And, you know, it's an election year and all this other stuff, so there's a lot that plays into it. So those are just trying to hedge our bets a little bit to be there with, with, as accurate as we can.
Granted, thank you. Generally very happy with the fire budget that came in this year. Thank you to both of you.
Counselors, any recommendations, questions, alterations? Seeing none, let's move on to number four, police. Any highlights, Paul, you want to say?
Really, one of the biggest highlights is that the cost of our vehicles went up about $30,000 this year. And this is only one of the departments that has a union contract, and those are our police officers. So that's already included in here in wages with, with wage increase. And across the board, our health insurance went up significantly. 11% is, is a big hike in our health insurance cost.
Across the board.
Across the board. So, you know, th- those are the factors that are playing into the increases in, in the police budget is salaries and then the cost of the vehicles.
Any questions? Seeing none, we can move on. And number five, communication.
The big thing here right now is, is a couple of things that, why this budget went up. Excuse me. This is another department that is unionized, and they are all under contract. And then we had, because of our 800-megahertz system, we have to start paying some of the maintenance fees on those accounts. So that went up as well for our maintenance area, for our licensing of the 800-megahertz system. Tonight on the news, Rockingham County is having a hard time getting dispatchers. We're down a dispatcher, so we're just praying that we can, you know, we get them. We, we're interviewing and trying to get as, the people in here as quick as possible. We're down one dispatcher right now, knock on wood, that, we have a good group over there. They're very well-trained. They're very hard-working. So I want to thank them for everything they do for the town, because I don't want to be on the front end of one of those calls with me on the other side.
Understood.
So it, go ahead. Maintenance office equipment, is that the number you were talking about for the 800 system maintenance or?
Yes, maintenance office equipment, yes. That's went up $34,000. And that was for our, that actually was for our RMS crime line, crime tracker system. That's 34, that one up there. And then there was some money put aside for, for the 800 too. So that's, that's all our dispatch, software, records management system. Went up in that, in that range.
So it's going to, it's going to stay there? I mean, because we jumped from $7,000 last year to $42,000 this year. We were at 30, 37 before that, so.
Yeah, so it should, should flatten off. You know, hopefully, hopefully. It all depends on the age of the system, if their contract, as it gets older, they want to jack their price too. But this is a pretty new system, so it should be constant for a few years.
Okay. Looking, looking into the past history, it's gone up from 20 to 37, and then last year, we dropped it by 30,000 for some reason.
Because we got a free year.
A free year, and then this year jumps back up.
Then it jumps up, so. We were able to garden the savings last year, and then it goes up this year. It goes, you get, usually, we, we try to, when we do our software contracts, we try to at least roll in the first year as free maintenance, because we know we're going to have questions. We know they're going to have to tweak things here and there for us. So we try to get that in the first year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, suggestions, recommendations?
Every time I see the cell phone lines, I'll be very interested to see the new cell phone policy. I'm anxious to see that.
We looked into it. There, there are plans that, yes. Cell phone plans have come down since the policy has been written. With that, honestly, it's, I think, overall throughout the whole budget, it was about $7,000, $8,000 worth of savings throughout the whole budget. I did not propose that change right now, because we don't have the new policy. But if we do get a new policy, it'll be $8,000 savings going forward.
I would like to think we prioritized that.
We're going to bring it in, in the March, March timeframe.
All set? Okay, let's move on to the next, which is code enforcement.
Actually, by taking out this $55,000, they almost are our flatline budget. They went up a little bit.
Any questions?
No, I didn't see any.
Comments? No. Okay, let's move on to the next, DPW Administration.
The big change with this budget, as you know, is that we upgraded the environmental coordinator position from just being environmental coordinator to upgrading and giving a little more beef up to being a deputy director. Without having a, a DPW director at this time, I don't know what the needs are. I know what my needs are, and my needs are. I need somebody who's going to be able to talk to DES and EPA and check out all the PFOA regulations and things of that sort, and, you know, the permitting and things like that. That's, that's what I'm going to need, because I've, I really haven't been involved with the, the permitting and that side of the house. So I need somebody I could rely on, because the regulations are going to be changing. MS4 permitting is another one that is up this year. And talking to a few individuals, they're trying to figure out how the permitting is going to play out. The way it used to be is, is by designation with the census, and that large designation with the sentence was removed with the previous president. And that's how they would look at who has MS4 and who has to do MS4. So now that that's gone, they have to reconfigure, EPA has to reconfigure that. And who knows if we're going to be on a permit next year, but I need somebody with expertise in, in the environment and things of that sort, especially when we're talking about phosphorus in, in the water and outfalls, and then we're going to have to do wet outfalls. Like, if it was, this was rain in, in April, we'd have to test every one of our outfalls. And they call that a wet test versus a dry test when it doesn't rain, to make sure that we're not pushing the contaminants downriver. So, you know, that's one of the positions that I feel is necessary when the new director comes in. He'll have his, his, his or her, she'll have, or he or she will have their opportunity to see if, what they need and what their expertise are. So that's really the only change in this, this department.
Andy?
Can you refresh me on 80, 8359? Under other is a $5,000 budget, and that's the increase on that line. Can you?
Yep.
I don't have it in my notes.
No, just give me one sec.
Okay.
I'm trying to get there.
Is it on the computer?
That was.
Finley, at this point, would say. If you had your computer, it says it right there. I don't know if it does, but.
It actually does say it. I'm trying to click on it, but my fat fingers aren't even.
Took advantage of him not being here.
Actual cost over the past two years.
There you go. Thank you. Tom was quicker than I was. I didn't bring my mouse. But it was, it was to reflect what the actual cost is, and that, that's for consultants that they might need here or there for, for some of the smaller projects.
Okay, so that's just to bring the budget to what last year's actuals were?
Yes, exactly, of previous years.
The previous years, no?
Yeah, not, not last year budget, this year.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Lon?
It's not a question as much as I need clarification. The discussion regarding the environmental person. Did, the bottom line of the proposed budget at 623818 in the Town Manager's column is still what we're working with.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments, suggestions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the highway, number eight.
There was a, a couple of items in this budget that, that increased the bottom line. One was, we added money from, for paving of about $800,000. And that was to help offset some of the safer cost grants that we, we received from the Fire Department, so that when the safer costs, safer grant comes due and the town has to pay for those eight firefighters, we're not, we're not seeing a 19-cent increase. So we've been trying over the last two years to put that into money that's non-reoccurring, such as paving, such as the 800-megahertz system, things of that sort. So that was an increase in the budget for this year, because the paving costs are going to go up. When I, when I was talking to the previous DPW director, he said anything in that line item would help to get us back. $800,000 would help them significantly to move, to move some of the pavement replacement up a little bit in the scheme. We do use a payment index that we've been using, and we also had NRPC, National Regional Planning Commission, do their own paving index. So we've been comparing the two and, and looking at what needs, what roads need to be paved next year. That was one significant increase. The other significant increase was for a fuel station upgrade. Our tanks over at the DPW garage are nearing their use, end of useful life with that replacement. This is an estimate that we received about a year and a half ago, and it was at $1.4 million. It's, it's one of those things where we, we cannot pull a fire truck into mobile and gas it up. Because the town, when we get those, Tom asked about the rates for diesel and, and unleaded, those rates, we, we do not pay the federal excise tax or the state tax on gasoline. So if we go in, we can, I shouldn't say we can't. We can pull a fire truck in there, but, you know, the fire truck might get filled up two, three times a week, and now it's in mobile getting filled up, or in another gas station getting filled up. The other thing is that we'd be paying the day, the rate of that day when we have to fill it up, whereas we're buying 55, 60,000 gallons of gasoline and diesel during the year individually. So we, when we go out to bid, we go and get it for the, we pre, basically, we pre-buy for the year at X percent, and then when they deliver, they charge us for that amount. The other thing is, being at Turkey Hill Road, it's almost the geographic center of the town, so that everybody can get there easily. Another plus is that it's, the maintenance shop's right there, too. So sometimes the guys go in and say, hey, you know, there's a knockin', I'm hearing a knock when I turn right or turn left, and the maintenance, one of our equipment maintenance guys can go out there and check out the car, or they say, okay, leave the car, and we'll look at it, things of that sort. Those are all kind of the pluses of having our own gas tanks. The other thing is, is that we, when our gas tanks are down, we have used gas stations throughout town. And the last three times we have done that, people, they're smart. They hear us say, hey, we're here with the town of Merrimack. I'm filling up on state gas, tank five. And then all of a sudden, there's somebody else, two, three people down, yeah, we're here with the town of Merrimack too, we're filling up. And ever, there's been two or three times in the last two years that we had to tell them that, who is this person that signed for it? And it's scribbling. You know, a police officer would sign with their badge number, a firefighter would sign FD after it, things of that sort. So we know that it's one of ours, and these guys are just scribbling, because they don't know what the signature's supposed to be, or ladies know what a signature's supposed to be. That's really why we're looking at this. We looked at that when we replaced the highway garage a couple of years ago, and we knew that we didn't have the money, but we knew that we had some more years of useful life on the tanks. The proposal right now, I know there was questions when we talked about this, the proposal right now includes a canopy. Right now, there's no canopy out there. If we can't put a canopy in, we don't put the canopy in. Things, things like that sort. The other thing is the, the piping that goes from our. Um, things, things like that sort. The other thing is the, the piping that goes from our old garage to the gas station pumps is starting to corrode, and then when the wires get broken, we have to run new lines back and dig and, and all that. And, and it gets very costly when you have to start with these guys coming out to do the repairs of, of the wires and stuff, cuz they can't just push them through the conduit. We have to get new conduit dug and, and brought it through, and, and at that time, it's an emergency repair because our pumps are down and, you know, fire, fire ambulances or fire trucks or police cars need to be fueled up. They can't run on, you know, on empty. Um, and I don't, I think they're, they're, they're regulations of how, when they get to a certain amount, they go fill them up, so they're not at a call and running out of diesel or running out of gasoline. That, those are the two major things in this budget. Besides sand and salt went up significantly. Um, but since we're reducing the amount of sand and salt we're using, it doesn't seem like a large jump um, with it. And they are one of our biggest users of diesel fuel because every one of our big trucks is diesel. So, besides the fire department.
Andy, you had a question?
Between the, the paving and the gas pumps, I mean, that's two point two of the two point three million dollar increase in the highway budget. So that's the two major items. I, I guess the first question I have, how many years do we have left that we have the opportunity to cover the safer grant for a one-time expense in our budget?
Another year. Twenty, we'll have three quarters of the year.
That was another year.
We'll, we'll have, it'll, it'll come due February of twenty, we started in February of twenty-two. So twenty-two to twenty-three is one year, twenty-three to twenty-four is the second year, twenty-four to twenty-five is the third year. So we'll have three quarters of the year next year to, to put some of that safer money.
So about six hundred K of roughly, something like that, of safer money next year we have. So, kinda what I'm thinking is, if the gas pumps could last another year.
Yeah.
I know that's a big if.
Yeah.
Um, we could potentially.
The only thing is, the gas pumps that coming out are the fund balance, not the tax rate.
We could use that fund balance to buy down the tax rate.
Okay.
Versus to buy the that, that, that's kinda where I was thinking.
Yeah.
The question, the big, the big gamble, and it's a gamble we all gotta take or not take, is do the gas pumps last another year? If, if three months into the year, the gas pumps fail and we have some big expense, we just negated any savings that we ever thought we were gonna have.
That was my, okay. That, I, I understand that he's prepared for that question, apparently.
Paul's, Paul's ready to show us something. Give you the.
I, I have the same thought, Andy, and the same thought process, pros and cons. I, I totally agree. And let it be said that at seven oh five, our illustrious leader has returned. And as soon as this particular, as soon as this is over, he will be taking over. We'll let him get acclimated.
Yeah, it's on now.
Is it showing up on your screen?
Oh, it's on the screen, yeah. Starting to show up there.
As long as it's on your screens, but wait till TV has it.
Nope, we just lost.
So it's, it looks like Paul would like to address your concerns. Is that correct, Mr. McKay?
I, I wanna bring information forward um, that I had.
May I, may I compliment you on being prepared with the possible questions? That's what you're supposed to do.
With an alligator?
You don't bring it up, but if it comes up, you're ready. Right?
All right, that's good.
Good enough?
Good enough, yeah. Yep, nope, that's good. So, um, I thought maybe there would be a question or two on this. So, um, I just wanna show you, in two thousand nineteen, twenty, um, the beginning of the fiscal year, we had over ten million dollars in fund balance. Um, we used seven hundred thousand dollars to reduce taxes. Um, we used an additional two hundred for paving. Come on. Where am I? Twenty twenty-one? There we go. Here was I talking? All right. All right, nineteen twenty, we had ten million dollars. Um, we used seven hundred thousand dollars for um, paving to reduce taxes. Um, we had a one-time rebate adjustment of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Um, total reduction was a million dollars to reduce unreserved fund, the, the fund balance. We ended up putting three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars back at the end of the year. So we ended up, total adjusted fund balance was nine point four million dollars. Over the years, we have used fund balance for, for reducing taxes. In two thousand twenty, twenty-one, we were up to nine forty-eight. Twenty-one, twenty-two, we were at nine forty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we were at eight ninety, eight, nine eighty-four. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we're using seven hundred thousand dollars to reduce the, the, um, the, for tax relief. Um, we've always used money to do capital projects, as you can see, uh, whether it's sidewalks, paving, uh, adding to the capital uh, fund deposits, roofs, lightening the town hall, tennis courts, roofs for ramps for Wasserman Park or docks, um, a flail muller. We've always used some of this fund balance for these capital purchases. Um, and looking at this money of uh, seven hundred thou, what I'm proposing is seven hundred thousand dollars to be used to reduce the tax rate, one point four to be used for the field distribution center. The reason why I'm comfortable with the one point four million dollars is we, no, I shouldn't say we. Matt Talton has been working diligently, and I think we got approval on a federal grant to help us offset some of our costs associated with the eight hundred megahertz system. We already spent about seven hundred thousand dollars this year out of budget um, for that system. It'll be coming in front of the council for final approval, but we, in looking at what is, they asked us for all our expenses for the year so far and what we have projected for the rest of the year, it seems like they're gonna cover those seven hundred thousand dollars that we have expended already for the eight hundred megahertz system. So in reality, that seven hundred thousand dollars will drop back into fund balance, cuz we raised it. Um, so, right now, in twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, we were at, at the end of the year, we were at three, eight million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, or eight point five percent, eight point five seven percent of fund balance. Um, we've had several discussions with the town council over the years of where the sweet spot in the fund balance is, because it's between four and eight percent, and the council's always felt comfortable around six percent. Understanding, yes, you're right, we can use some of this one point four million dollars to help offset um, offset some of the tax burden. You are correct, but we have another bite at the apple in September, when we have to send in our revenues, and that will be after the fiscal year end and we do an audit. Um, if interest continues to grow the way it is, if building permits stay hot the way they are, um, even though we're not getting the new cars, our um, money for our auto registrations is there. It's still there. So we're seeing our revenues be on track, if not better than normal. And those revenues automatically go into fund balance. So at that time, we can make an adjustment to help offset the tax rate. We still see new construction in town. We still have a lot of apartments coming online. Um, we still have some buildings that are, are, that are moving forward. Um, things of that sort, so that will help the tax base as well, which will also bring down the tax rate. So, um, sorry that this is, I don't know why it's so.
Large. That made it better.
Yeah. There we go. Let me do seven.
I can't say a thing cuz I, that's what I would do with it.
Of course, I lost the whole.
There it is.
I'm sorry. It's a touchscreen and it's, it's touchy. So, um, but that, that's where we stand with it. Um, with that being said, after we all said and done, um, we're using two point one million dollars of fund balance to help really the tax rate. And I felt that this was a great opportunity to be able to use a chunk of this fund balance money without affecting the tax rate on a project that will last for thirty-plus years, cuz that's, that's usually what the double tanks for the gasolines last, about thirty years. So that's, that's why I proposed this, cuz it's really spending one point four million dollars, and that's on the high end. If it's less, it will be less. But to, to have that and be able to offset that through using fund balance for thirty years, I thought was a good use of fund balance. It isn't just a one-time operating expense kind of deal, it's a significant capital outlay.
Any other questions? May I ask a question? Could you have, can you scroll it down a little bit where it was seven hundred thousand? That's for this year, right?
That is what, yes.
Now, what would the impact be if you made that seven hundred thousand, one point four million? What would be the impact, which means seven hundred thousand more? What would be the tax impact approximately?
Just adding seven, additional seven hundred and leaving the one point four?
No, taken out, just out of curiosity. And it doesn't have to be specific.
To, to make sure I'm, I'm tracking what you're asking. You, you're saying, what would it be if we removed the one point four million and just increased the line six, the reduced taxes to one point four million?
Correct.
Okay.
So you're just really saying seven hundred thousand more, not fourteen, not one million, four hundred? Cuz you're already, you've already got calculated the seven hundred thousand. So you're talking about an additional seven hundred thousand. What tax impact would it be for seven hundred thousand?
So that'd be two point eight, right?
Thirteen cents roughly?
Thirteen cents off of the proposed.
I'm taking out the one point four totally. So it's not in the appropriations, it won't be in the fund balance, it's just out of the budget totally. And just adding seven hundred thousand dollars, or a total of one point four million dollars is what you were asking, right? Did I understand the question?
You are, yeah, you are.
So seven hundred thousand is about thirteen cents.
The, the one point four million is a give and take, right?
Right.
I mean, that was coming out of fund balance, and so it didn't impact the taxes anyway.
That's correct. Right. That's correct. So, but that's, I'm making that, I didn't wanna make the assumption, but.
Yeah, you just be. But it's still, it's still the, what, seven cents you said?
Thirteen cents would be seven hundred thousand.
Almost two cents per hundred thousand.
Yeah, roughly, yes.
That's what I'm, yeah.
So.
I don't know that we have seven hundred thousand more that we wanna put in there.
No, no, I totally agree. I totally agree. But I, I wanted to, we're playing the numbers game here, and I'm just trying to think of questions that people may have as well, in terms of the kind of decisions and thoughts that we had trying to come to a decision. I'm personally okay with a one point four million coming out of the uh, fund.
If we increase, if we flatlined, if we flatlined fund balance, meaning that the nine eighty-four, five hundred, if we did that again in twenty-three, twenty-four, which would be adding two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars into it, it'd be around a two, five cent reduction in the tax rate. So we'd be under.
Be three ninety-nine?
We'd be, we'd be at four oh three.
You said how much reduction?
About a five cent reduction, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars more. Two eight four five hundred.
Four oh three.
Would be four oh three. Would be a four oh three.
I mean, but I am, I am very excited about the opportunity for the, the eight hundred megahertz grant and that going back into fund balance. I think that's, that's phenomenal and, and great homework achieved to, to go off and do that. I, I'm a little concerned about the four oh eight, and I'm just trying to think of what are, what are options we can do to bring that down? I would be comfortable under four, um, but what are options we could do to bring that down that won't impact the town's ability to continue to maintain our infrastructure? This was, if we could delay this for a year, this is one opportunity we could use to get there, and I'm not saying it is the opportunity. But again, there's risk on the opposite side of that is, if that system goes down before we upgrade it, then we've got an additional cost that, you know, negates any savings that we were looking at, so.
And also will increase in cost over the year too, so we have to keep that in mind.
Yep.
So you're suggesting that if we did not do the one point four million, we would take some of that and put it into reducing taxes? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, because the one point four coming out of fund balance right now has no impact on the tax rate.
Correct.
But if we did not spend that one point four out of the fund balance and instead moved it to the reduced tax rate line to get us closer to four dollars versus four oh eight, it would, it would reduce the impact to, to obviously the, the taxpayers of the town, the, the increase. We'd be looking, we'd be going from three eighty-six to four. But as Paul said, we have another bite at the apple come revenue time, um, that we can take a look. Just a thought.
Are you suggesting moving, what's your suggestion as to the how much you would want to put to reduce taxes? Right now, it's seven hundred thousand. What are you thinking?
Well, I would like to, to, if it's two cents per hundred, right? So if we increase that by four hundred thousand, we'd be right at four dollars.
We would be, yes. And your fund balance, I just, I played around a little bit while you guys were talking. I was paying attention, seriously. But, great thing about spreadsheet. So if we increase it, uh, four hundred thousand dollars additional, just taking it out of fund balance and not taking anything away from the project, we'd be at six point two percent, which is right around the six.
And that's keeping the one point four?
And that's keeping the one point four. Just remember, the following year.
You have to make up that four.
We have, I have to make up six hundred thousand dollars.
Well, but, but if the grant comes through.
Well, it's already.
That, that's already calculated.
The seven hundred is already calculated. Yes. That's why I felt comfortable proposing the one point four. I was hoping they would cover the whole cost, because we did outlay money prior to March of twenty twenty-two. I wish they would've told me that, because we could've delayed some of the purchases until March of twenty twenty-two. We bought them in October of twenty-one. So, but, uh, and those were the radios, but we needed the radio, so we had to do it. We had to do it.
I, I don't regret moving forward on that at all.
No, no, but you know, it's, it's, it's just all of a sudden, it's, and Matt, Matt, I don't, you know, he, he did Joe Man's work on this. Um, he reached out to Senator Sheehan's office right away when we're doing this, and he got in there and it was written in special legislation for the town of Merrimack for one point four, and then we got into politics. And it got delayed, and it got delayed, and it got delayed. And then, all of a sudden, we got a phone call about November. You gotta do this right away. You gotta do this right away. And we were pulling out our hair to get a bunch of the stuff in and sign off on a bunch of this stuff for it, so. Pulling out Matt's hair.
Not gonna be, no. I, I guess, I'm curious to know where the rest of the council's at, as far as, you know, do we, well. So are we okay with four oh eight?
But, well, wherever we go, we've learned that we always have to be cognizant of the impact for the following year.
Yes.
And, um, and I, and I think we could still do that, um, but if it gets, it's time. I've always said, as time goes on, it can get dicey, but we've done this for a few years now, and we haven't hit that, you know, hard spot, yeah, so. So as long as we're just thinking of that, that's, you know, I'm, I think we can probably do it, and still be at the six percent.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Council Hunter. I'm not at all comfortable going out with, you know, four oh eight. Um, also, even though, you know, we do get a second crack at this in September, as people are saying, that's not what people are gonna remember. People are gonna remember what they go to the town meeting for and what they're voting for in April. And I'm not comfortable with, you know, four dollars and eight cents for eight. Or eight. But I was very happy to see you had made some additional amendments to that.
So, Paul, if we take an, go ahead, an additional four hundred thousand out of the fund balance, like you're saying here, that's going to put us where next year? We have to come up with an additional four hundred to cover that hole or?
Well, in next year, we're looking at reducing, we were going from seven hundred to five hundred. So we were looking to cover two hundred, but now we would have to cover six hundred.
Thousand.
Six hundred thousand dollars, yes. So we'd have to cover this four hundred we put in plus the two hundred we, we were looking at.
So if everything stayed even.
Right.
We would see a tax increase next year of not the eight cent reduction, but a ten or twelve cent increase.
Eight times sixteen, yeah, sixteen.
That, that's the concern every time we get into this argument and it's very difficult to get my head wrapped around it. I'm sure everybody in the audience, TV audience and everything has, has that misunderstanding as well, but we just don't have enough left in our fund balances. We keep going forward. Unless for some reason we have a banner year that, that we don't expect with inflation and all the other costs. I mean, the town is a trailing indicator of problems in the, in the economy. And so we are going to see our selves hit after everybody else gets hit. And so next year or the year after are going to be tougher years for us to gain money. And I think we're, we're I understand the argument of trying to reduce the taxes and, and whatnot, but every time we, we talk about this, we talk about the future cost of doing that and what it's going to get after us. And we're liable to see increases in the next couple of years, just because of inflation and everything primarily catching up with the town. And I'm concerned that, that those on top of yet another eight or ten cent increase trying to, to make up for this hole that we're putting into this year. We'll, we'll just make it even more complicated and difficult.
To, just to make sure I, those arguments are true, assuming the budget remains flat and revenues remain flat.
Right. Well, the budget's not going to be flat, you know that.
True. I, I just want to make sure, but we're talking about potential increase in revenue, I.
We're talking, we're, we're looking at it. You're right. That, that is the assumption that everything would stay flat. What Counselor Koenig is talking about, because we lived it, was that we had six hundred thousand dollars in interest revenue. And it's basically taken us, every year I'd come here and say, oh, I think it's going to go up this year and we'd still be at zero. Oh, I think it's going to go up this year at zero. And we were bringing down the interest revenue, but we only bring it down like a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars a year because we knew what the impact on the tax rate would be. Because we couldn't take it from six hundred down to the fifty that we were getting. So we were bringing it down slowly with it. The other thing is, is that, as Counselor Koenig said, is that we, at the same time, increased our interest to six hundred thousand dollars. We increased our car revenue for what we get for car auto registrations significantly to that year. And interest rates went through the roof. People stopped buying the gas cars where they went to these, you know, smaller, more, more economic cars at the time. And we saw our revenues fall off there as well. So, because we are a year to two years behind what happens with, with industry. You know, not to belabor the point, but the tech is laying off left and right. Microsoft's laying off. Every, a lot of the tech companies are laying off right now and that will have a, a effect on us. And, and the other thing is, I live in town. I have family that lives in town. I, I, I understand senior citizens on fixed income. When I, when I propose my budget and bring my budget forward, I, I keep all that in mind. You know, and, and I relayed that and I'm sure all these people behind me would say the same thing when we were preparing our budget. I said, we need to know what your needs are. Not what your wants are, but what the needs are. And they brought forward a budget for their needs and there wasn't, there isn't a lot of wants in this budget. There's a lot of definite needs in this budget. And there's some stuff that we put off for years and it's just escalating in cost. Such as our fire suppression system.
Right.
That we have to do and our gas tanks.
Lon, you had a question?
Not a question, it's discussion, I guess, which is rare for me, but I'm very mindful of where, of where Counselor Koenig is going. And I appreciate Counselor's, Counselor Hunter's thoughts. But I, I'm mindful of the fact that over the last year and a half, two years, sources of money have become a little bit soft for us in order, in order to get more funds. I don't think I'm incorrect to believe that that trend is going to slow down and slow down somewhat quickly. And I'm also very mindful and I don't know what the right word is. Content with the fact that over the last eight or ten years, the town staff and the council has really worked hard at maintaining a level funded budget picture. Doesn't mean the budget hasn't increased, but we haven't faced the spikes and then the drops and then the spikes in the, in the tax rate that I believe some of the thoughts tonight begin to engender. It's just a thought that I have. I'm content with the way things are presented, but that's just me and you asked for some different thinking and there it is.
Appreciate that.
I have a question, Paul. Sounds like if we get, this is big ifs, we get the eight hundred thousand from the government, right? That would go into the front balance, is that correct?
Seven hundred thousand, yes.
Seven hundred thousand. So that next year, we could take five hundred thousand and add that to the unreserved fund balance, reduce taxes column. Is that correct?
In twenty four, twenty five, yes, you could, you could reduce it some more. You could use some of that.
Because, and that would still maintain our six percent.
Yeah, rough. Yeah, we'll be right around six. And, and you know, we're, we're sitting here in January and we're getting hit every week with snowstorms, two or three, you know, and they're not, it's not like, okay, let's plow and not use sand and salt and things of that sort. So, you know, we were, we were looking good in December with our overtime budget for highway. In January, we're getting closer. I can tell you right now, this, if we get this storm that we're in right now, every one of our gentlemen is over twenty hours of overtime. They punched in, those DPW workers, they punched in at seven, seven o'clock Sunday night and they didn't leave until almost midnight on Monday.
I'm not surprised.
So they're a dedicated crew. We did get them some help with the contract, but they're punching in again and they're here until it's cleaned up and, and they'll, they'll go home tomorrow if everything's okay at three o'clock. So they'll punch in sometime tonight and go until three o'clock. So, you know, the overtime does, does accumulate with some of these storms when they come in on a Sunday or they come in at three o'clock at night. You know, we haven't been lucky like we've been in years past where they start snowing when they're during normal work hours. Excuse me, but, you know, there, there are a lot of, a lot of, I hear what, what Counselor Healy and Counselor Hunter are, are saying with it. And I know that they're going to remember what they voted for at, at the polls going forward. There, there is, you do have some money that can bring that number down. You know, if you, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would make this or two hundred, you could, two, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars then here in, in the fund balance number. So that would be five fifty.
If we add a little bit more.
Right. So if you add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's, that's another three cents. Now you're down to four oh five. And you're still good going forward into the future. The future years with, with helping fund balance, reduce taxes, because then you can bump this up to three fifty. And.
So it's a little bit less of an impact.
You'll be right at six percent. If you do that, you had a hundred and fifty this year and a hundred and fifty next year and kind of split it over, over the two years. You'll, you'll be at the six percent.
See, to me, that's sort of a compromise.
What, what is line twenty four down there? The increase, decrease to fund balance?
Oh, line twenty four, that is what we're projecting would go into fund balance every year. So we're projecting going out, we'll have a two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, because.
Over, because, because of salaries and sick time and.
You know, people leaving, people coming, things of that sort, revenues. You know? We get four and a half percent of interest instead of what we're projecting at four and a quarter and stuff like that.
No, I just, that's what I wanted to understand is where that number, so that number could fluctuate or probably, no doubt will fluctuate, plus or minus.
Yeah, right. And, and if we do the average for the last, you know, last year, we had a great year. The three years, you know, we had a great year, we had a great year.
We've had some bad years.
And then we had some really bad years before that, you know? Going back, so it's, it's been up, up, up and downs, up and downs. And we've been unprecedented for the last ten years. We've been a growth spurt. And the construction is going to dry up. So.
Other thoughts? We need to give him some direction, so we need to come to a decision.
I guess my question, so if we're in favor of keeping the fuel, because right now we're on the highway part of the budget. If we're in favor of keeping that in, in the budget, maybe doing something else with fund balance, do we hold off and do that when we talk about fund balance or do we?
You could do it right now. If you're, you want to increase fund balance, we, we'll put it on as a revenue and, and put it on that side of the ledger. And if you're comfortable with keeping the fuel and fuel tanks in there, then we'll just move on to, if there's no other comments for highway, then we'll move on to solid waste.
Probably ready to get off a highway right about now, aren't you?
See, I would, I would prefer.
I'll talk highway all night if you want.
And I would prefer if we're going to, and I'll give you the reason why, if we're going to make changes, can you go up, Paul?
So which one?
Go all the way up to the top.
Okay. Yep.
If we're going to be increasing the amount to reduce taxes, I would like to be able to make that decision now because that's going to give us a launchpad for future deliberations.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Because if we're going to accept that or change from that point on, we know that that proposed amount is going to be changed and any future changes we make is going to be based upon that as the basis. So.
Yep.
That's what I would prefer to do. And then I'm going to be happy to pass it over to my chair here. So what is the, I would like to propose, since no one's talking, let's make a decision. You know me, just to make a decision right or wrong. It's the night decision that drives me nuts. Okay, I would like to increase as proposed right now, the extra unreserved fund balance to reduce taxes to be six hundred and eighty four thousand, five hundred. To make a total to reduce taxes to nine hundred and eighty four thousand, five hundred. And to keep the fourteen hundred for the.
One point four million. So.
Keep the one point four million, as presented right now, just the way you're saying it.
All right. So basically you're looking at the current year, you would be looking at the twenty three, twenty four. So what you're looking at is eight hundred and fifty thousand total and not the nine eighty four. Is that, is that what you're understanding?
I was looking at the nine eighty four actually.
But that, that was last.
That was last year, duh.
Yeah. So if you want to do that.
You wanted to match that or did you want to?
That's what I thought you were doing.
That's what I.
I just want to make sure I understand what the motion is.
Put it back at the four hundred that you had while she makes this discussion. That's where it was proposed originally.
You're absolutely right. I was confusing the ears. But if we do the six eighty four, five hundred repeating from last year, so that the nine hundred and eighty four thousand, five hundred, what does that do to the tax rate? Is that the four oh five?
No, that's less than four oh five, right?
Less than four oh five. It's two eighty four up, so it's about.
Two hundred and eighty four, we can do that.
So with those changes, what would it be for the tax rate?
Give me one sec. We, we can do that. Two, three, eight, four, five hundred.
Five and a half cents or something like that.
Negative two, three, eight, four, five.
I think you'd bring it down to around four oh three.
Four oh three.
Okay. Which is pretty good actually. Is that right?
What does that leave in fund balance?
That will leave in fund balance. We're projecting now.
Yeah.
But our projection is about six point one million dollars at the end of twenty, June of twenty four.
Which is six point three, two percent, which is within our range.
Yeah, the goal was six percent.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm proposing that?
Yeah, but then we have to make up that two eighty four in next year's budget.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's.
Which to me.
Paid out of this year's budget that we'd have to make up.
I totally agree, Tom, but I think by not doing the one point four, but not being that dramatic. And I agree that next year we're going to look at the two hundred thousand. We will have more money in the fund balance because of the reimbursement to be able to put some.
And, and the reason I'm comfortable with it is the projection of two hundred thousand to go into fund balance. Is that what that bottom row shows?
Yes, that's what it showed.
We've outperformed that every year for the last five years. And that's the reason that I'm comfortable having that challenge next year. So I second your motion.
And it may not be, but I mean, that's the risk we have to take based upon the information we have before us and our history and is it a risk? Yes, it is. So we have a second. So motion made by Nancy Harrington.
And seconded by.
Seconded by Auntie Hunter. Discussion.
Well, just, I, I'm good with this, with your motion. But I always want to remember Barbara had suggested that in September, when we can take another bite at the apple, if you will, on the tax rate, she said, people won't remember. What they also don't remember is if we do use a bunch to absorb it for this year and it jumps up next year, they won't remember. We did this to try and save it for them. So that's why the stability of the whole thing is what, is what is so important.
That's why I wanted a compromise.
And, and that rings true. I mean, I feel it with the eight hundred megahertz system. I mean, every time we turn around, we're, we've got to cover that, that cost in the budget, same way with the safer grant. Those are easy decisions to make at the time. It's the following year that makes them a hard decision. So, understand.
So I can, I can go along with this number. I think, I think we have the opportunity to deal with that two hundred and eighty four thousand through the budget, through next year's number and whatnot. And so I'm, I'm not going to oppose it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And seven, zero, zero. Now I hand over.
So kind.
And you guys start with.
Before you leave highway?
Oh, certainly.
You mentioned the.
Do you need Paul?
The canopy and the pumps. No, I don't need that, I don't think. But you had one point four million for that total and then said, well, if we don't put the canopies in, we save something. Can you, can you remind me how much that was?
Okay.
Because it might be less than one point four million, is what you're suggesting, without the canopy.
Yeah, and if that's the case, it would fall back into fund balance. So if, if the project comes out at one point three million, it would be one point three million. And the hundred thousand would fall back into fund.
Can the canopy be added easily in the future?
We had that discussion when we were looking at redoing the gas, the, the island where the, the pumps were. And there would have to be some definite cost to do that. The canopy itself was, I want to say about a hundred thousand dollars, but it's all the making sure they're in the ground and you know, you see those pictures all the time, you know, news stations love to show that when a heavy winds come and they blow the canopies, it's, they got to be secured. So you would need all the footings and all that work. The canopy itself is not a lot of money and then you would have the fire suppression system and it's overall is not as much money as the drilling and making sure that the footings are in and things of that sort. So if we do do something and we don't have the canopy because we can't afford it, we definitely make sure that in the project, they put the footings in so that we can add it in the future. I believe that was what you really asked.
That's, that's would make sense to have the footings and stuff prepared for it. It's just a matter of whether you install the fire suppression and the, and the canopy itself and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And do you have any guests who have made it, how much that would save?
I, I don't know because the number we got was about a year to eighteen months ago. It was a ballpark. It was a ballpark, and, you know, it all, a lot of this stuff goes when they, when they open up the ground. And, uh, they look at removing our tanks, and they look at the soil around removing our tanks. You know, they're estimating that they're going to have to exhume a lot more soil, but if our tanks were clean and the ground is clean, then the cost would be less, but we won't know until we get into.
Okay, so we're just speculating.
Alright.
Thank you.
Now, before I move the torch over. Just to make sure the tax rate with those changes is presently four dollars and three cents. Is that correct?
That's what I have on my sheet.
Okay. Your job.
If I under, as I was paying attention, I think Nancy had started, we pick up, or it up to solid waste, I guess.
You are correct.
And, um, so if, uh, Paul, did you have anything?
I, I just, just want to give you a quick overview of this budget. The increases really come into play because our, uh, our tipping fees and our, uh, have increased significantly for, uh, recycling. Um, and, uh, that, that's really, and then we have a trailer for ninety-five thousand dollars as well um, that we're looking at replacing. So tho- those are really the two areas where this budget has increases, are tipping fees and, and then the trailer.
Does anybody have any comments or proposals?
So. Can I just ask questions? And I forget what we discussed earlier, but the, the construction demolition hauling jumped up from a hundred thousand, from zero this past budget to a hundred forty-seven thousand. Remind me why we're bouncing that around like that, or?
We, we, we didn't break out construction and demo in years past. However, we've been tracking it for the last four or five years of what our construction and demo would be. So, um, the hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars that we increased, as you can see in the the line above at eighty-three fifty-five, last year was eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, that included construction and demo. But we've been tracking it, so we pulled some of the money out, a hundred and forty-seven and seven sixty-five. Yes, it adds more than the eight thirty-nine, but that's because of the increased tipping fees in both areas.
But we had it separated the year before that, for the actual of a hundred.
We've been tracking it for a number of years. Uh, what our actual tonnage are and, and the costs associated with it. And this year I decided to make it its own budget line item uh, because of the different tipping rate that we have for construction and demo versus, uh, versus our regular trash.
Okay, so we're looking at a seventy-five thousand dollar increase in hauling solid waste and construction demolition.
Yes.
Overall.
Overall, yes, because of the tipping, mostly because tipping fee increase.
Yep. Yeah, I just wanted to try and bring that out to make sure it was clear. Thank you.
Okay, so anything? No, um, were we voting on anything?
No, we're just going through each one and. And there's someone. What I was perceiving is we go through each one, people would make recommendations, keeping track of if there's any changes, what impact it would have on the tax rate, so at the very end.
Vote on the whole thing.
We would vote on the whole thing.
Very good, that's what you were doing.
That's what I was doing.
Perfect.
You may change that if you want.
No, I liked it.
Since you're now the boss.
So, gosh. Alright, so I think we're all set with solid waste, we'll move on to parks and rec. Parks and rec is, is a reduction, really, and, and the reduction came from, uh, uh, some of the jobs that we did, we did about seventy, seventy-three thousand dollars worth of, uh, of, uh, ju- um, roofs and things of that sort of twenty-two, twenty-three, and there's really nothing planned for twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, in construction, this budget actually went down about thirty-eight thousand dollars. Okay. So do you guys have anything, any questions or adjustments? None? Take it, perfect. Alright, number fifteen, library.
Um, the same thing really is the library's budget, uh, they, they, they've re, uh, re- removed a couple of positions, added some great wage increases to make them more competitive. Um, overall, their budget is, uh, up very small, it's up about, uh, twenty-seven thousand dollars net increase.
Anybody have any adjustments, comments? No. Um, next on the docket, number sixteen, equipment maintenance.
Um, very small, but very needed department. Um, this department handles every one of our pieces of equipment in town and makes sure that they're operational. I gotta bring my mouse next time, sorry. Um, the overall budget for here is a, a three thousand dollar increase.
For equipment maintenance?
Yep.
Yep.
Oh. Yep, equipment maintenance, three thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, you reduced their request by fourteen thousand.
Right, because we looked at the air compressor and the wheel changer and, and Kyle at the time said, you know, those are the fourteen thousand dollars. We have significant savings in the highway department and, and the overall savings and salaries, so um, we felt that we could buy this stuff in this current year. Now, because once again, it's needed, it's, they're long in the tooth, so.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or adjustments? Very good. And number seventeen, buildings and grounds.
Um, really, the big increase here is, is in capital outlay. Um, we've added, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our building sprinkler system, fire suppression. Um, we've had, uh, people walk around, uh, you had the great demo that, uh, show and tell that the fire chief did last time. Um, we also, the system hasn't been, we've been patch, we've been patching the system over the last few years and it's becoming more costly with the leaks and time, because every time we have a leak in our fire suppression system, it's a dry system. And when the compressor runs and there's an air leak, the fire department gets notified, so they come out here and help us and try to reset it, or then we call out our sprinkler guy, and of course, it never happens that it's between eight and four o'clock. It's always eleven o'clock or, or after hours, and then we're getting hit with a surcharge. Um, talking to the gentleman who does our fire suppression system, in this room, the system is about, we redid it when we redid the room, which was about eleven, twelve years ago now. Um, so this is all up to date. In the downstairs and finance, it's the older system. In the other building, east wing, both, both, all three floors are the older system, and that's where we'd be looking at, uh, redoing the piping there and, and trying to get it and redoing some of the sprinkler heads to be, uh, more closer to date. Um, what I was told today by a, a gentleman is that even the sprinkler heads have a shelf life.
That's right, he charged about the expiration.
Chief did, yeah, but it kind of, they were doing an inspection in my side and the, uh, fire marshal came in and said, you know, those things do have um, a shelf life, and I can tell you those were probably built in the eighties, so they're well past their shelf life. Downstairs and in, in my area.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's the big, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then the other one is a church parking lot reconstruction for ninety-two. Um, we signed the agreement for John O'Leary to rent the parking lot of the church. Um, our cost is really only about forty to forty-five to fifty thousand dollars of that ninety-two. The rest is where we're in there, the church wants to do some upgrades and they're going to pay for those upgrades, but because we're on a federal, we're on a state budget and they want us to gross appropriate, we have to gross appropriate that and bring in the revenue as, on a separate side. But it's, it's accounted for, and those are really the two big changes in building and grounds.
But there is a revenue on the other side.
There is a revenue on the other side for, for the parking lot, yes, there is.
Part of.
Part of it, like fifty thousand dollars.
This probably isn't the time, but, uh, you know, the, the town has buildings that are old. Should, should we, or could we have a, um, a, a maintenance for buildings reserve account, or do we have something like that?
We've looked into that, um, several times as a council, and, uh, we never brought it to the next step to, to get it funded and get it as a capital, um, it's not a capital, uh, reserve fund, it would be a capital expenditure account, kind of like mill foil. So we'd have to put money aside for, for big things, and it wouldn't be small things, it wouldn't be, oh, we lost, uh, you know, we lost, uh, uh, air conditioning compressor for four thousand dollars, it, it would be for the bigger items such as. Or, or when we did the.
Replacing all the windows or.
Yeah, replacing the windows, um, the other one would be the, the, uh, HVAC systems was another big project we did that we did out of pocket. And those things were there, so it would be something that, um, we, we could write up a warrant article, um, if the council wanted one um, for that. It's kind of late in the game to get it going, we could definitely do it for next year.
We can put that in the tickle file for next year.
Yeah, I'll put it in our, when we, when we have our retreat, we'll, we'll definitely have it in the tickle file for that.
Because it, I mean, things like this are going to just keep coming up with older buildings and whatnot and.
Yeah.
And, and part of New England is being older buildings.
Yes.
What we are.
Yeah, and then, uh, you know, the other thing is, is that, uh, we have a slate roof on this building, we have another roof on that building and.
Classic.
It's gonna, it's gonna get expensive to replace the slate and, and the shingles over on the other side.
But you, you're right, if this had to be redone, it would be costly, I think, but have we really, is it that much, because slate roofs tend to last a long time.
I, I don't know when the last time the slate roof was done, to be quite honest with you, we're not showing leaks in it. Um, the only reason why I know we're not showing leaks in it is because our, one of our bu- building and grounds custodians has told me numerous times that, uh, basically this roof has ice and water shields from the valley all the way up to the peak.
And he would know.
And, uh, he was, he was the last time they put this roof on, and he's been here thirty-five years now? So, yeah, so it's, uh, it's in that timeframe, so it's, it's thirty-five years, it could be thirty-five years old or a little newer. But that's why we are not seeing any roofs, because we do have the ice and water shield from hip to valley, I mean, hip to, to peak. Um, with that, uh, but, you know, they do get expensive, and believe it or not, the footprint of this building is historical. The inside is not, but the exterior is historical, and we do have paperwork on that, because when they were putting the, um.
It's fire escape.
The fire escape, covered fire escape on it, there was, I got a whole file on it that, you know, basically this exterior is, is especially the roof and the windows, has to keep that historical book.
Okay, thanks. I, I realize that was a diversion, but wanted to understand, thank you.
Very good. Um, any adjustments or questions, comments on this one? Get my technology thing, have to take over a second because my battery.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. This, this is another budget that, uh, came in, uh, under about a nine thousand dollars less than the year before. Um. It's, uh, you know, Tim is doing more with less, um, in this department, uh, had some staffing realignments and staffing adjustments, and that's why basically the budget is less this year is because, uh, Tim is, Tim's department's great for training people.
I was gonna say, he should, he should be getting, uh, education allotment.
Yes.
From other towns. Educating them to move to the other towns.
Yep, so, you know, but, um, that's the nature of the beast.
It is.
Um, and it's great that these people leave Merrimack with a high enough edu- uh, education experience in the community development department that they do get, you know, planning and zoning jobs and director's jobs, so kudos, kudos to Tim and his department for training.
Um, anybody have any questions or comments or adjustments? It's none, no. Nope, we good? Town clerk tax grant number twenty-four.
Um, the major adjustment in this budget is, uh, Diane, um, saw, came in last year for a need of an employee. Um, council was fortunate enough and, and granted that to her, and the taxpayers approved it. This year, when Diane was looking at her needs of her department, she said, you know, I don't have a lot of foot traffic. A lot of people since COVID have, have, is, are doing it online, the renewals are being done online. Um, I still have the amount of work that I have, but it's not the foot traffic at the window anymore, so Diane said that she is recommending removing a position, which I agreed to. Um, however, with the caveat that if she needs it in future years, that she can come back and ask for it again, and of course, she can come back and ask for it again, but Diane, uh, basically, uh, gave up a position and that's the savings in this department.
Uh, can, uh, on the wages, eighty-one oh two, can you remind us, the, the department came in at a hundred and forty-six K, town manager came in at one fifty-seven, what was that discrepancy?
The discrepancy is that, uh, the four ladies at the window that handle the bulk of our, are, are the face of Merrimack, everybody remembers those four ladies when they come in and pay their tax bills or renew their cars. Um, and looking at other communities, we were kind of below their average wage, and we've talked about this for a couple of years, so that was that increase that I proposed.
Yep.
For them.
I just didn't have it in my notes, thank you.
No. Turn to go on to number twenty-five, welfare.
Um, welfare i- is, is one of those budgets that, uh, you know, is, uh, state mandated for, uh, helping people for rents and things of that sort. Um, Pat does an excellent job with making sure that, uh, people meet the requirements. It went up, uh, it went up a little bit, it went up maybe six thousand dollars in total, and some of that, most of that is, is to help out other agencies that actually help the town, so those people aren't coming to us for, for need. Um, Pat does a very good job in, in shipping these off, and Pat does do, uh, a fair share of research and making sure that the town does get more for, than what we pay for in those areas with social services.
Do you have anything, any adjustments? Moving on to twenty-seven debt service.
Um, we're not proposing any new issuance of debt. Um, as a matter of fact, one of our bonds is coming, uh, once, we just paid it off. So there's a reduction in, in there of about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, well, um, and in sewer, same thing, they paid off a de-watering, um, upgrade bond, and we are, we're about a year away, uh, summer of twenty-four. Um. Excuse me, uh, between substantial completion of the new thirty-two million dollar upgrade, so we'll see something in next year's budget for that. Excuse me.
Number ten, wastewater.
Uh, that budget went up. Um, we, uh, basically have, uh, they have one union that's in contract there with them. Um, I'm trying to get to the bottom. Um, chemicals went up, um, chemical costs went up, usage for electricity actually decreased as we heard when, um, the gentleman Leo was here discussing that, uh, um, so that went down, chemicals went up. Uh, use of natural gas, though, has gone up because of the, uh, composting um, that we have to dry out the, um, the sawdust, we have to use more heat to dry out the sawdust, that's why that went up. And the big nut was the city of Nashua, uh, basically doubled what, uh, what they're charging us, they're charging us thirty-two thousand dollars a quarter for sending our waste from the Penetra Pump Station to, uh, to Nashua, and that's all included in the rate that we charge for the users. Um, and then they had a couple of small other things that, uh, also increased. I talked about chemicals, bulking agent, uh, that price went up as well, about fifteen thousand dollars and, and, um, really, that, that's the bulk of those increases that they had moving forward.
Have, have we?
And this is an enterprise fund, so it's self-supporting, it's not on the tax rate, so whatever they, the expenses they have, they have to cover through user fees.
Have, have we looked in, uh, have we checked our compost rates, uh, what we get for our compost? Or is it something that we
We actually have a third-party agri-source that sells our compost for us, so they keep us pretty competitive.
Okay, they do that adjustment for us?
They keep us pretty competitive.
Okay. See anything? If anybody knows, and then we'll move on to number thirty-two, media.
That budget, once again, this is one hundred percent covered through cable franchise fees. Their budget went up about four thousand dollars in total. There was one adjustment, and I think I already made it on the
Actually, let's show their budget went down.
All right, yes. Yeah, I'm just trying to find it. Yeah, I did, I already, I adjusted it. So, yeah, so their budget is there. Once again, franchise fees. I did also, the council asked a question about where's the media fund balance sit? As of right now, they're spending about three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. After the, this year, they'll have about two hundred thousand dollars in their fund balance. And that fund balance will keep on moving up. We used this money years. We took two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the franchise to help offset the taxes. And we stopped doing that in in, actually, this year, twenty-two, twenty-three is the first year that they get the full cable franchise fee. So, but their, their fund balance, they have about two hundred thousand dollars. We'll get them about two-thirds of a year of operations if if cable franchise go away.
Okay. All right, anything further there? I'll move on to thirty-three, fire protection.
This is basically a a pass-through for the area over by Manchester Street in that area. There's fire hydrants out there that are supplied by Penachuck. And this is a pass-through of those hydrant charges the town gets to those people in that area. And they're projecting to be at a hundred and twelve thousand dollars this year.
Okay. All right. Yes, on the wastewater fund, it's nothing to do on that, Paul?
Yep, nope, nothing to do on wastewater capital projects or the capital projects fund. Other special revenue, those are your details with police and fire. When they get called out to things, events like Rib Fest or the triathlon at the YMCA and things, they charge a a fee for those people, or if there's a detail needed because of tree work or things of that sort in town, they get charged a fee. And really, the hours haven't changed over the years. It's a dollar amount, and that's based on current average of pay rate.
Okay.
And those are one hundred percent offset by revenue.
All right.
We don't have to talk about the revolving fund tonight because that's a separate item. It's not voted on in the budget. What we do, one last item we do need to talk about is the, all the way in the beginning, the capital reserve funds. Capital reserve funds. And long and short of capital reserve funds is I flatlined them this year. At one million nine hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Every capital reserve fund got the same funding they got the year before. The only one that increased was wastewater, that went from five hundred thousand to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But everything else stayed the same.
All right. Anybody have any questions on any of this?
The wastewater capital reserve fund comes out of funds that they make and
User fees. User fees, and that's all included in the rate.
So that's all part of their rate?
Yes, that's included in their rate as well. So I'm going to need two motions.
Exactly. I was just gonna say, what's the motions that you need?
The first motion that I need, actually, I'm gonna need three motions. I don't have to, okay. We'll make it.
We've already approved the non-union stuff.
Right, we already approved all that. The motion I, the motion I need is, I need a motion to move one million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for general fund, capital reserve funds to the public hearing on February sixteenth.
So moved, second. I'm not even gonna have to wait for the details, because you have
I didn't catch you a second.
I didn't catch a second either.
Right, and I just want to double check on, yes, it is the sixteenth.
It's in the motion.
And that, that amount includes both the town and the special funds? Is that just the
That include, that's just general fund.
Just the general fund?
Just general fund, yes.
That's gonna be in a warrant article as a single
As a separate warrant article item for that. Capital reserves. Because of the state.
Yeah, instead doing that, what, three or four years ago?
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just looking at two million dollars and wondering what that impact on the tax rate is in my mind, and that's
That overall tax rate of about four dollars and three cents included this.
Well, I understand that.
But if
I've always had an argument in myself, with myself, and sometimes here, with whether or not it makes sense to be putting all this money into capital reserve funds, charging today's taxpayers for tomorrow's expenses. And, and I know everybody says, but that avoids having to bond and all that kind of stuff, and we have really low bonding right now because of these capital reserve funds. Those are all great. But we're talking two million dollars a year going into that fund.
And, and I could tell you, we're putting money in for highway, and most of that comes back out
And it comes right back out again.
You know, fire department, we put money in, and that's for the plan that we have when you gotta pay six, seven hundred thousand dollars for a fire truck. It's nice to have it instead of spiking it in that other year. And then it's always nice to have money in that road infrastructure, because people drop it out left and right, and if we can move up a bridge two, two, two and a half years, saves the town money on, on that side as well. So that's why some of these capital reserve funds, and we're putting in bare minimum on these capital reserve funds. We're not trying to get huge balances with it. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but for the balances, but they're, they're not. The biggest one is the cap, the road improvement capital reserve fund. I think it's right around a million dollars. Everything else is right in, you know, a couple hundred thousand to four, five hundred thousand dollars. So we don't have large, I do have the balances.
Philosophically, you've felt that way for years, I know.
I have, because the cost of money and things of that nature, there are people that know more than I do financially. That have said that the cost of money is, is, is an expense, an expense you have to think about when you take the money out now, but don't spend it for five years. The town's getting the benefit of having that money. And, and with, I've been here now thirty-one years, so I guess I'm getting
You've taken, you've been getting the benefit.
But if I were moving in this year and then moving out in two years, I'd be paying taxes for something that I never got a benefit from. And so it's not really so much about me at this point, because I've been getting the benefits and, and working with it for so long. But it, with a transitory environment, with people moving in and out and stuff like that, those that move in are paying taxes for things that they're never gonna use, but they have the benefit of what's been replaced or put in place beforehand.
The same argument could be said for schools.
Yeah, you know, I hit the coin a phrase from the previous two finance directors ago, Bob Levin. He once said to me, capital reserve funds, are you EKG, like an EKG? Because if you didn't have them, that's what your tax rate would look like. Be bouncing up and down, and up and down, and up and down.
Where you'd be bonding those big things.
Or, yeah, bonding them, yes.
Those are difficult to do, but
Right, and then you'd have to get sixty or sixty-seven percent on some of this stuff.
We wouldn't have decent roads, nor would we have the tracks we need, so.
Well, we'd have to play like Bedford and go out and bond eight million.
The world, exactly. And, and again, you'd have to get the approval, sixty percent, and that's not easy to do as we know.
So case in point, for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the one point nine million dollars is being deposited in. At the beginning year, there was not four point nine million dollars roughly in capital reserve funds. You had the one point nine in. We have over two point five, almost two point six million dollars of expenditures coming out of those capital reserve funds that we save for. The balance is about four point two million dollars. We have about that much coming out in twenty-three, twenty-four as well. So the balance would be right around four million dollars. And that's where we're looking at, you know, that little spot is, is to keep that money. And I totally get it. I totally get it, but we're hoping that if you move to Merrimack, you love Merrimack enough that you're gonna stay for more than one or two years.
Well, and there's other benefits, right? Being able to move fast on a grant.
Yep.
Because we have the money sitting there. I mean, there's, there's a lot of additional benefits to the way.
There is. And actually, communities have called, when I was sitting in Tom's seat, and even when I'm sitting in my seat, town managers have called and said, how do you do this? How do you do that? I said, you gotta be committed to it. You gotta be committed to it, and you gotta have a board that's committed to it.
And it only works because we've been committed for so many years now, this is working out.
Exactly.
And not only that, but it takes away the uncertainty of what the bond rate is for interest. Some years it's good, fine, right? A bond is their money. Other years it's bad, good, use our money. And don't get, you don't incur the interest rates on it.
I agree, and I'm not arguing against it at this point. I'm bringing the conversation up so that people are aware of what's going on. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
We have a motion on the floor.
We do have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Yep, any further discussion on the motion? Just to move
One point nine, four seven two five.
Yep, to the public hearing. No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. I knew it was five at one point, I got that. All right, what's the next motion, Paul?
To move five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital reserve, wastewater capital reserve to the public hearing.
So moved.
All righty. Any discussion on the motion?
Same argument, but it's coming from a special fund, so that it's not gonna impact tax rate.
All right. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained at seven zero zero? Did you have a third one that Barbara didn't want?
Yeah, this is the big one. To move the budget of thirty-eight million, seven ninety-one, five sixty-four. Just double checking. To the public hearing.
Who made the motion?
Yeah.
Oh, Andy did.
Yes.
You did?
I did.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear it. I thought Paul, I thought you were saying, on Paul's motion.
What was the number again?
Thirty-eight million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-four.
Motion by Andy, second by Barbara. Would you like to speak to your motion? I think we spoke. Any further discussion on the motion? And I'm, call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero?
Thirty
Three nine, oh, three eight, rather.
Three eight, seven nine one, five six four. We'll get you the updated sheets. Total of everything besides the ratification of the union contracts, total budget of forty-one, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars is a tax rate of four dollars and three cents. That's all I got, that's all I have.
Thank you for all the staff.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. But they are thrilled to be here for this meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good night.
Somebody and see if any of them nicely clean off by car.
See if what's
Wait, you mean, I can't bring anything back up and start cutting now?
Should we adjourn? We're all good, aren't we?
I think we're all set, right?
So we can
Motion by adjourned, second by Andy. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstained at seven zero zero. Thank you, everybody.